Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council regular meeting, Wednesday, December 21st, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Town Hall, Green Room. Can we all stand for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Item number two, visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time? Visitor, none, thank you. The approval of the minutes for the December 7th, 2022, meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number five, Unilever developer requests for tax abatement. Michael Massimino from Unilever is here to present to council.
So, good evening, everyone. Michael Massimino, developer and partner at the station at Clinton, formerly the Unilever property. While I'm here in front of you tonight to request for a tax abatement, I first off wanted to thank everybody for having me a couple of days before Christmas and a week before the New Year. So, in light of that, I want to emphasize that the main purpose tonight is to really start a dialogue with yourselves, the town manager, and anybody else appropriate in the town of Clinton. We're not expecting a decision on something of this size and caliber, but again, we'd like to start a dialogue. So, what I'd like to do and start off is take a step back. Obviously, everybody's familiar with the property, the Unilever back there, and talk a little bit about who we are as developers, what we've accomplished, and some things that we've been through over the past several years, and then get into some of our asks. So, myself and my partner out of Boston, Ristide Ralamo, we're two-family development construction management firms based in Connecticut, and we do real estate deals between Connecticut and Massachusetts. We specialize in multifamily development, and we do have a decent-sized industrial portfolio. We also are very familiar and involved in several brownfield-type remediation deals similar to Unilever. Most recently, we acquired a project in Southington, which was formerly the Ideal Forge Property, which is a major brownfield that we're going to be redeveloping into a couple hundred units. I'd like to talk a little bit about the transaction, the property, how we started and where we came. So, we've been involved in the town of Clinton, and we started negotiating with Unilever directly back in 2016. As everybody's aware, prior to us, there was a developer that was trying to move forward and put a sports facility, which they were successful by zoning, and then backed out of their agreement. We ended up getting, were successful going into a purchase and sales agreement to purchase the property in 2016 with multiple contingencies. The purchase and sales agreement that we had at that time actually gave us flexibility to give us to almost 2020, 2021 to close. Contingencies that would have allowed us to have zoning, understand what the environmental issues at the time were. The big thing at the time, which we've now resolved, had to do with wastewater, the fact that there's no sewers, and they were on a package treatment plant. So, we spent a lot of resources. We put together a team doing our due diligence. We had monthly meetings with Unilever. Three years go by into our due diligence, and we got a call in March in 2019, and ultimately Unilever said, "Listen, you've been great. Senior management changes have had. You need to close this deal within 30 days, or we're breaching contract." So, we ended up negotiating, but we did close in July of 2019. That said, we inherited a major challenge. We had a property that was antiquated, major carrying costs. We were unsure of where the environmental impacts were at that point, and we basically closed with no contingencies and took on a burden that Unilever should have really taken over and finished and cleaned up. I mention this because if we had the proper time of due diligence, we would have been in front of Town Council years before while we were under contract, had informal discussions to discuss things such as taxes, of which we're here tonight. Since that time, we have made a lot of achievements. There were challenges. Obviously, we were in the midst of a pandemic, which didn't help matters, but the current state of affairs with the subject property, when we first closed, we actually received a special permit for an indoor sports facility, although it was approved prior. We've got it reapproved and have that filed on the land records. Shortly thereafter, we were approved and successful with a 47-unit multifamily building, which were actively under construction, and we're hoping to open up for occupancy and residence for March of this year, 2023, into April. We were designated, and the property is now part of the National Historic Registry, so we've submitted to SHIPPO, and we're working with the State of Connecticut for tax credits. Since that time, we worked with the zoning department, who's been very helpful, and the property is now zoned with a TODO, which is allowing us to do a mixed-use development. We later, over the past year, we modified that zone. We basically came up with a zero-lot line subdivision. So, the building that you see on some of the photos, the old, the former Ponds Building, the three-story mill building, that was built in the '20s. The warehouse building that's attached to it was built in the '50s. So, what we've done with the zero-lot line, we were successful in subdividing by three lot split and filed a miler on the land records, the Ponds Building from the warehouse building. What we've also been successful, which was one of the key successes, is we were finally approved by the State of Connecticut to allow septic. So, we basically have two septic systems approved. In addition to being approved by the State of Connecticut, we have permits in hand to put in two septic systems, which will serve the Ponds Building, which is our, we're proposing in the future to convert to multifamily, and then the one-story warehouse building, of which our intention is to put an indoor sports facility, of which we're going to discuss here tonight. Last week, we went back before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Over the past couple of years, we have acquired a couple more properties that are adjacent to the parcel, one being 7th Central Avenue, which was the former Ratcliffe Locksmith Building, as well as 20 North High Street. So, it was the first time that we've actually submitted a master plan that was well thought out. We've changed our development team, our design consultants, over the past couple of years. The plan was put together with multiple things into consideration. One, septic, which is obviously a big thing to get these things to actually be developed. Two, the fact that the main property is, it's a brownfield, so when we closed the property, we had to take it over as a transfer act, which we are the certifying party. We were arguing back and forth with Unilever, but the environmental burden is on us. So, the master plan that went before zoning, of which you have a copy in your handout, it shows what our intentions are and what our plans are. It is also phased out. We're currently going to complete, as I said, the first building in 2023, in March of April. We're going to be back in front of P&amp;Z in order to get our special permits to proceed with the next conversion, which will be the Ponds Building, and at that point, we're committed to put in the proper infrastructure throughout the property. The good news is, we have been in negotiations, and we have a letter of intent with an indoor sports facility operator/venue. They're based out of California, and while it's somewhat confidential until the lease is executed, and quite frankly, the lease is contemplated due to the fact of the taxes currently, I could get into what they're going to be offering. I just can't get into who they are at this moment. And in addition, we've retained Goman and York. Mike Goman is principal, and they will be providing a fiscal and economic impact study, as well as a financial analysis of the development. They were not able to have it prepared for tonight. As I said, I really wanted to open dialogue, but they will be back before you, hopefully within the next several weeks, so we could get into the tax abatement structure and whatnot. As it relates to the environmental remediation plan, our infrastructure improvement, community amenities, as I said, the property is an establishment. We were the certifying party when we closed back in July of 2019. Unilever, part of their deal is they wouldn't take any of that liability on us, so we are totally responsible for the cleanup. We have been active in cleanup. Our LEPA record is GeoQuest out of Bloomfield, so we are in the midst of addressing a lot of the areas of concerns. We've pulled oil tanks out of the ground. I mean, it's going to take several years, but there is a plan. The good news is it has been quantified. Unfortunately, we haven't had any assistance from the State of Connecticut. Because Unilever somewhat pulled the plug on us from a timing perspective, we weren't able to get into the brownfield remediation programs. So, we're in the transfer act. It's there to stay. There's really no way out of it, so we're dealing with that as we go. As far as the master plan, the major infrastructure improvements, 20 North High Street and 10 North High Street, which was adopted, which was allowed into the TODO by planning and zoning last week, was a big accomplishment for ingress and egress. So, one big challenge with the site, I want to put on record, we have met with a neighbor several times informally, and obviously, we've discussed with them in P&amp;Z. There's traffic issues out there. They've been there. The truth of the matter is, they're a problem for us, they're a problem for our neighbors. We have the neighborhood at John Street, which tractor trailers and people are driving up streets the wrong way. We have tractor trailers that actually drive onto the property by virtue of GPS, not realizing that there's a bridge, can't go underneath the bridge. They jump curbs, they come on our property, come up with U-turns. So, like I explained to P&amp;Z, I put on the public record, we are going to make a major effort, meet with the neighbors, hear their concerns, contribute with our own resources to kind of come up with some studies. I met with the new town planner last week, but traffic is an issue, and the reality is, this property is part of the South, because the amount of acreage we have, different ingresses and egresses, coming up with turnarounds, coming up with signage. At the end of the day, the bridge is fixed, it's not going anywhere, so the solution has to be through this property. It's going to help the neighbors, it's going to help us. It's a problem. The tractor trailers come in and out of there every day. We're nowhere to go for a turnaround. So, from an infrastructure standpoint, everything that you see on the master plan will be new. Some of the roads are existing, some of them are being proposed. Our intent, of which the site plans will be presented to planning and zoning, is going to be full pedestrian access on both sides with full sidewalks. We're going to do, bring connectivity through our property, including the frontage, so the Unilever property has a rail spur, and above it, it actually has a parallel walkway that we could connect North High Street to Central Avenue through our property. It's actually covered. It looks like it's part of the train station, to be honest. So, it gives good connectivity and it could connect North High Street to the train station and Central Avenue. We have plans to remove all the overhead power lines. We've been talking to Eversource, so ultimately, from the corner of where the train station is, up Central Avenue, down John Street, at our cost, we're going to be eliminating the overhead power, putting everything underground. It will benefit some of the residences on John Street, as they basically require 1,000 feet of power to be underground, so some of the people will actually get underground power as well. But with the train station there and what we're doing, just to have the overhead power lines in the buildings' windows, we want to put that down. As far as the commercial tenant, so part of your handout, there's a rough layout of what the intention is for the subject property, which is the one-story warehouse space. They've been in there with the design team. Ultimately, they're proposing about 45,000 square feet of turf on the rear, it's part of the property. They're proposing somewhere between 16 and 18 indoor pickleball courts. The column spacing in the building fits perfectly. It's 40 by 40, so we're actually able to have it without structurally adjusting any of the building. They're proposing indoor golf simulation, a gym, a basketball court, and then we left out a space for the brewery. Obviously, there was a lot of discussion about brewery. We did have a tenant several years ago. They've been hanging in there. I never executed the lease. Once they got wind that we had a sports tenant, they wanted to get involved with the food and beverage. The sports tenant wanted to have somewhat of their own control there, so while we left out the space, there is not a current brewery contemplated. When we got our septic permits and we went to Connecticut Department of Health, that was all taken into consideration as far as capacity, so that is taken into consideration. As it relates to the commercial tenant, the big sticking point, honestly, is the taxes. Over the past several years, the taxes have doubled on us. With what we could offer for a lease and what the tax structure is currently, we just can't really make the economics make sense. We have submitted our actual tax proposal to the town attorney. I have a draft that I could submit for you guys tonight to have and to digest and go through, which, again, I'm going to open it up for questions, but really, we articulated the proposal, we're obviously happy to hand it over and to go through that. When it comes to tax abatements, we understand that you, as a town, have a fiduciary obligation to the town, the community, as it relates to taxes. With that said, hiring Goman and York by conducting the fiscal economic impact study, as well as the financial analysis, will validate what we're proposing, as well as the benefits to the town of Clinton and the proposed development. I do want to be clear that it's not like we're seeking to take money, we're seeking to reinvest into the town, into infrastructure for the community, and bring vibrancy to the downtown, and clearly, it's consistent with what the State of Connecticut did by putting in a train station. A couple of things I want to address as it relates to the multifamily component. When we come back in for special permit, we are going to offer affordable component. Our initial intention was not to do so, but understanding what's going on with the State of Connecticut and the town's needs, there are needs, so we will be, when we go back in for special permits for the multifamily phases, offer an affordable component, with the multifamily piece.
Good. Anybody have any questions?
What is your current tax status?
As it relates to...
How much you owe?
Yeah, so let's talk about that. So, currently, it's a sore spot as far as our tax bills and the status. The taxes ultimately doubled on us. We're currently within an appeal. As of yesterday, we wired, I mean, to answer your question, there's a $550,000 owed. $100,000 plus of that is personal property taxes that, we don't know why we're being taxed for it. There's no personal property left in the building, so knowing that that was a sticking point, we wired $350,000 yesterday to Barry Knott, who's going to wire it to the attorney that's in question tomorrow. I could provide a receipt of that. That's going to pay the taxes, real estate taxes, current through today, including interest. We did not pay January's bill, because if we weren't in this situation, January's bill isn't due until the end of January, and quite frankly, the personal property taxes shouldn't be due. In that vein, in the event that there was some sort of structure, there wouldn't be that tax bill.
Did you go to assessment appeals to appeal that?
We did.
You didn't?
We did.
Why not?
No, you said you did.
Oh, you did?
We did.
How did that work out?
It's in the court process.
Oh, it's in court?
Anybody else?
So, just for clarity, you're going to create some permeability between High Street, John Street, or closing off John Street, but then also connecting to North High Street?
So, as far as closing off John Street, so the neighbors have approached me multiple times about that. I met with the new town planner this past week. Obviously, there's challenges with that for multiple reasons, the width of the road. Like I explained to the neighbors, I will help, I will provide resources, I'll pay for some studies and some conceptuals. Obviously, it's not my call, but I'm in favor of it if it helps everybody. At the end of the day, there's health, safety issues on both ways. If you block off the road and some tractor trailer comes down that street, now what do we do? So, I'm in favor of helping the cause, and I'm in favor of being part of the South. Before we go in for any new special permit for any more multifamily, the traffic piece needs to be sorted out, and we're going to be front and center on that. So, we've hired Bowler Engineering, they're the ones that put together this master plan, so we're going to focus a lot about that.
I'm just looking whether or not you're creating some sort of permeability. You're saying you're basically opening up your development site to allow traffic flow and trucks to go through there?
Yes.
So, you're taking on the burden of, because sometimes you could, as a developer, you could close it off and make it private.
Correct. No, we're definitely going to be opening up, because it's a challenge that needs to be resolved.
So, you're here tonight, I mean, the agenda item says, "Unilever developer requests for tax abatement." What exactly are you asking for?
So, let me just... I don't have comments for everybody.
And are you talking retroactive, or...
Abatements can't be retroactive.
No, I wouldn't think so. Thank you.
This was given to Martha Colina. I'm not sure if anybody's seen it, but... That ultimately spells out what we're asking for.
Can you give us a synopsis?
I'm sorry?
Can you give us a synopsis?
Yeah, most definitely. So, what we're looking for is a five-year development phase-in deal with 10 years thereafter. And what that means is, for the next five years, we feel that's how long it's going to take us to build out the master plan that's before you, in phases, and we're saying that each time we get a certificate of occupancy per phase, we would then, the clock would start ticking for taxes. Goman and York will provide a cash flow analysis of what that means in dollars, but to be in simple, we're proposing there's taxes assessed on the land that's underneath the existing buildings. The reality is, the buildings have negative value for the amount of dollars and capital that needs to be put into them in order for them to be leasable. So, we're saying we'll pay the taxes on the land value during the development period. Each time we get a certificate of occupancy, this March being the first building, we'll have a 10-year phase-in for that building. We're seeking a three-year abatement at zero, and then it jumps to 30% year three, and then 10% increases there forward. These are similar structures that we've done in the past and that have been done in the past.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
In order for us to make the decision, what would you be able to provide before that in terms of construction plans and letters of intent? I mean, the development has been so slow to give a tax abatement with no guarantees of what the future looks like for us.
I mean, we could provide whatever you guys would want. Again, I really wanted to open up the dialogue. We've had multiple conversations, and it has, obviously, it needs to happen here. In situations like this, obviously, there'd be an agreement in place, there would be clawbacks in the event certain things did not happen, but we're going to be open book. Whatever you guys would need, obviously, we could provide. I think the reality is, the numbers, the data, and the backup would be at a follow-up meeting, and I would have Goman and York here to put on their presentation and talk about...
That would be the information that the council would need, our decisions, basically, the approval of an abatement. That's what we're here for, construction, the work, and that's not, that's planning and zoning. So, I mean, any information you can get to provide to us as far as what the impact would have on the town is the important information that we would need as a council in order to review the abatement and then ultimately approve an abatement on that property.
Understood.
I don't think we need to go down the road of the work you're doing. Certainly, some information as far as timing on how quickly you think some of these things will be done, but other than that, I think the important thing for us as a town and as a council in order to make that decision is just the financial impact on the town.
Right. The proposal that I have submitted, that is a draft, it coincides with the master plan. So, the master plan has phases, the draft and tax proposal is based in phases.
Carl, are you in any stage in terms of analyzing this and breaking it out year over year, what its impacts are for the town, budget, et cetera?
No. Go ahead. That would be part of the information sharing that would have to take place.
I wasn't sure how far along you were in terms of the conversations.
There has been no conversation. So, the proposal you have was something that was given to the town attorney as part of an assessment appeal settlement. It had not, our attorney advised the other side that we were not in settlement talks and to go in further than that. So, a lot of information would be needed to answer your question.
So, let me understand this. So, right now, if you, whoever's the builders, you'll always pay taxes on the land, even through construction phases.
Correct.
Starting in March will be your first occupancy.
Correct.
That starts the clock for a 10-year plan, of which the first three, you go zero on taxes.
Right.
And then on year three, you start at 30%.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I want to know.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. So, again, we'll just, I mean, obviously, thank you for coming in, give us the information. I think it's important for the council to know kind of what's going on with the project so we're aware of it as well, and then we'll just keep the dialogue open in the next, I guess, just confirm, you know, next meeting that would bring in the additional information that we can present to the council, too.
Great.
All right.
Thank you, everybody. Happy holiday and have a happy new year.
Thank you.
Same to you.
Take care. Okay. Item number six is the Morgan Project graduation exception request, the chapter 194, article 111, 194-5A. This is the same that we normally give out to everybody that would like to serve alcohol on town property. A project graduation wants to have an event here at Town Hall in the Green Room and wants to be able to serve here online. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number seven, finance director's report. Sue.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is to report on the five months pending November 30th, which is the packet that you've received. Total revenues for the month of November were $482,000 and included $300,000 of the tax revenues, $90,000 from town services, $37,000 in grants, and $53,000 of other revenues. As of November, the current tax levy collection rate is 57.1% of the 23 budgeted revenue compared to 56.5% for the same period of 22, so slightly higher. The town services revenues of the $90,000 included the town clerk of $47,000, building fees of $32,000, transfer station of $4,000, police contractual three, boat moorings and land use each of two. The $37,000 of the grant money that was received was received as budgeted, and it was for the state pilot program. The other revenues of $53,000 was due mainly to $50,000 of interest income received for the month. General fund revenues year-to-date for the five months were 52.6% of the total revenues budgeted for 23 compared to 51.5% of 52, so again, tracking slightly higher. Expenses for the month of November were $3.9 million. $2.9 million of that was for the education operating expenditures, $726,000 with salary and fringe benefits as typical trends, and the remaining $300,000 is further detailed in the report. Year-to-date, the expenses through November were $25.7 million, which is 43% of the budget for 23, and it's exactly the same as the prior period of last year, so we're tracking the same as far as those go. Investment balances, the investment income, our investment balances totaled $29... Investment balances, the investment income, our investment balances totaled $29.8 million at the end of November. And as I previously mentioned, the interest income was about $50,000 for the month of November and it's $134,000 for the five months ending November, which exceeds the budgeted amount for '23 of 90, by $94,000. The monthly investment balances and interest income report that's included in this month's packet, you'll see, shows the impact of the recent rate increases that have had from the town, whereas of July, we were only earning $800 a month in investment income and now we're earning $50,000. The higher earnings have also benefited a town that we are no, not incurring any service charges as there was being offset by the earnings credit. So another positive for that. Carl and I recently met with the town's representatives from the Bank of America to formulate a plan as well to find ways to receive additional benefits from them. So I think we'll actually be seeing some additional earnings from them in the near future. Contingency and fund balances are still being reported as they're unchanged from the last month's packet and they're detailed in the report attached and will be updated as soon as we release the fiscal year '22 financials. And ARPA, you see the report there, $466,000 has been spent to date and additional $37,000, I believe, from what I reported last month. Like I mentioned, the audit has been completed and the financial statements are being presented to Town Council at your next meeting, January 5th, I believe it, or January 4th. The 24 budget, the sheets are due today from all the departments and I'm now compiling all the information in the sheets and to begin that process. Most of them have come in as well. The ban, the note that we'll be issuing in February, the first draft of the offering statement has been circulated amongst the attorneys and internally for us to review. So that's also in process. And that's my report for November. Any questions?
Just curious about the health insurance and how we're doing with that, you know, coming out of the pandemic and then the rate increases. Are we still remaining stable with the state plan? Is that?
Carl can discuss that really.
It's a year commitment to the state plan, so we're still with the state plan.
Yeah.
They are telegraphing earlier where rate increases might be going to avoid the surprise that took place last year. So they gave us an early indication, which we would be using to model in the budget, but they're going to do another webinar awareness presentation to participants in January and then again in February to see if the modeling continues to carry out for what they need for a rate increase. So it helps us build the budget. They understand that there was a lot of angst last year when they gave us all one percentage, everybody built their budget around it, and then it ballooned by another two-plus percentage points after that, after most budgets were put to bed. So.
So we're guessing.
That's a lot better than where we were with the guessing.
Yeah.
Any questions? Thank you, Sue.
All right.
Thanks, Sue.
Happy holidays.
All right. Item number eight, Chairman's Report. I just want to talk quickly again about just making sure that we're kind of all on the same page as it relates to Town Council, how we're supposed to operate, how we're supposed to function. You know, obviously, you know, there's always the talk about who has information, who has more information. You know, I don't have any more information than anybody else that sits at this council seat. If I have a question that somebody brings to me, then I do go to the town manager, ask him, okay? And it's the same that I would ask for anybody, that we do not go to any department heads and ask them specifically. If you have a question that you may want from a top of the department head, please just go to Carl. He can get you the answer. If he can't, obviously, he would get you the answer. You know, and the reason is simple, is that you don't want individual council members going to department heads and having conversations with them because then you are then talking to them as a council member and things can be misconstrued or, you know, certain information being given to you that the rest of the council doesn't have. So we want to make sure that we make sure that we maintain that kind of flow of information and communication within the town so that we know that's how it is. And then also, obviously, individuals going, individual council members going to department heads makes it difficult for them, obviously, because they feel you're a council member and they should be talking to you. So you kind of put them on the spot and I don't want them to be feeling that, you know, they need to provide information to you. So full transparency, everybody should be involved in any conversation that's had. We all should be given the same information at any given time and we all should be part of any conversations that go on. So I just want to make sure that we continue down that path. We've been very good at it. I just want to make sure that we don't start changing things or doing things differently. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. I will speak for myself personally, people that came to me during the campaign as I ran, wanted to know about my position on the Town Council. I am not leaving the Town Council. I will serve out my term as Town Council and I will serve out my term as the chairman of the Town Council. Obviously, we have election coming up in November and what happens in November will happen, but that's, that's how I will proceed personally as it relates to that. So I want to make sure people are aware of that as well because I was asked that question many times when I was off campaigning. So that is it for me. Carl is up next, First Town Manager's Report. So you have the written report in your agenda packet. And so some of the highlights include ongoing effort with the EDC to talk about their economic strategy and setting a direction for them for consistency. So we've had two meetings thus far. They're making good progress. There's good engagement coming out of them. Some of them have been looking for this kind of conversation for a long time. So it's, thus far, it's been a positive going through the process with them. We will continue to work together into January and February and maintain the momentum. I'm assuming at some point in time they're going to want to come in and touch base with the council to show you their work and sort of get the council's input and engagement. Noise ordinance, council created a subcommittee. That subcommittee has met. We talked about complaints, the process by which they get dealt with, what role the police department has, how they are intervening one way or the other, how a noise ordinance might work. So sort of the way it was left was we would be relying on the police department to increase awareness at roll call or other type events to make sure that all officers understand how and what the tools are that they have to be able to respond to some of these cases, whether it's noise being emitted from one neighbor to another neighbor or noise being emitted from somebody's muffler that's been modified. The data would be tracked for a while and then those reports would go to Police Commission. Those reports also would also go to the Town Council. So you'd get a little bit more track record on what's going on with noise in town and how many are repeat complaints that aren't being solved by a police officer trying to appeal to people's better nature. And then if there's further discussion, we would continue the committee process and keep going down a path after we get the data. Possible regional solid waste management authority. So this was a long conversation that took place with some of the cog towns who rely on the Essex Transfer Station. We're all with MIRA. We all send our waste to Essex. I guess as MIRA unwinds, that contract can flow to another entity to keep our waste going to Essex, which then goes to a burn plant rather than being shipped out of state and landfill somewhere else. But sort of the structure of what it would look like for a new entity, where its startup money would come from, what the tip fee would be, things of that nature really need to be hashed out. So it's really more of a start of a conversation and something that will continue as a dialogue within the region to see whether that makes sense for everyone. There is a lack of state policy on this, so creating regional solid waste management authorities instead of a larger entity like MIRA will have different policies reflecting whatever the operational decisions are of those regions. Short-term, our waste is not going into a landfill in Pennsylvania or to the South, which puts us in more of a unique position than anyone else who is sending their waste to MIRA. So we are, we're in sort of a different, a different space. So for the purposes of the budget, we're going to assume that we're continuing with MIRA. But this conversation will continue going forward. There seemed to be interest, at least to continue the conversation, make sure that we're, we're all working together. I gave you an update on the cog and their adopted legislative plan for your, for your review and awareness. Not all of it pertains to us, but there are some things in there that are of value to the town. Facade grants finally got the green light from SHPO for two properties that applied. So grant packets went out to them so they can get going in order to move forward on two potential facade projects in town. The steep grants sort of moved through an awful lot of paperwork very quickly to get up and running so that we could secure the most favorable pricing before the end of this year. So we've got good pricing now for our equipment. It'll be locked in. We will actually be able to put our hands on the equipment and we're now moving through some check-offs that are required by the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities. They're involved in making sure there's minority set-asides for contractors. This would be on any construction-type bid over, over $50,000. So we're moving through the process to check those boxes off with them. There is a lengthy report in there on the winter electricity demand response to Eversource. I don't know how much you want to get into the detail of it because it's, some of it was just done as an awareness. I went through a similar presentation with them during the summer when ISO New England, the grid operator, thought that the heat was going to push electricity demand through the roof and that they were going to have to have rolling brownouts. Now, it's increases in natural gas might cause knock-on effects where they're not going to be able to generate as much electricity because of natural gas going into heating. Therefore, theoretically, it's potent, there could be potential for rolling brownouts in the winter. So it's really more of an awareness issue for us. If ISO New England gives Eversource time, we will be, they will communicate with us and then that sets in motion things for us to do to make sure that we continue to get natural gas to heat our facilities. We can make things open for the public and then we see what the electricity is. However, that being said, ISO New England apparently can demand an immediate shutdown in which case there is no time to communicate and rolling brownouts go into effect immediately. But then it was stated again, it's not likely to happen. It's believed to be a warmer-than-normal winter. So it's kind of a who knows and we will be able to communicate if we're given the heads-up to communicate. However, they may not communicate that to us in time, so it's just something to be aware of as a potential risk going into the depth of the winter season. Also included and attached to my report was information that came in from the Beautification Committee. Their charge required them to give a report to the town for what their plan was going into the next year. That included if they were going to ask for money so that it could dovetail with the budget so we don't have to kind of come with it, come up with it on the fly like we did before. So it's there for your reference to read, try and figure out how it fits within the budget and then there can be a more robust budget conversation in February for where it fits for, for the council in terms of your priorities. Another item that's not included, let's see, Carter Hill Bridge will be open on Thursday afternoon. Bridge's been paved, it's good to go, so that will be open to the public starting tomorrow afternoon. Additionally, as I reported previously, Clinton has been working with Westbrook, Old Saybrook and the Borough of Fenwick on a regional grant in order to do a coastal resiliency plan for that shoreline stretch with the National Fish and Wildlife Service. The regional grant was awarded by National Fish and Wildlife, so it's a grant of about $150,000 in order to develop a coastal resilience plan that stretches from Fenwick to Clinton to look at how the town can implement strategies that can reduce the negative impacts of sea level rise and storms on coastal communities fronting on Long Island Sound. We did a little bit of work with Yukon and their Climate Corps. This would be a more formalized plan, which could then drive policy conversations at planning and zoning. Council may want to give some thought as to having a committee that will focus around coastal resiliency. Once this is ready to get up and running, that you, we've got a group that can represent a cross-section of people that are interested in that as a topic because we are going to start talking eventually about policy ramifications going forward. So it can be a planning and zoning thing, it can be a Town Council thing, but we're going to have to have some engagement around that for public conversation. And that's it unless you want to know more about estuary transits or anything else that's in my report.
Carl, with the noise ordinance, so I get asked this all the time. So, you know, I know, I hear what you said there and I know there's not formally a noise ordinance, but what is the rule, like if somebody is playing loud music, for example, at like 11 o'clock at night? Is there, is there something that can be done? Like, is that against the law or is there no noise ordinance or can the police just show up and ask them to please turn the music down? That's it?
It's really the latter. So the, you should call the police to go out there to look. The officer will exercise their judgment as to whether or not this is a nuisance. They have the authority to issue tickets. It's just a matter of whether it meets the threshold of a nuisance or not. If you had a noise ordinance, you would run out there and take a noise meter reading, which may not crack the decibel threshold to be a violation. So it was felt that you had a little bit more discretion with the police officer rather than a noise, a noise meter reading which says yes or no. And if it says no, then there's nothing you can do about it. The officer knocking on the door, asking them to turn it down was viewed as that's a way to at least try and get people's attention, to be more, more of a good neighbor and aware of other people's interests in having a quiet neighborhood.
Yeah. I think, because I think it goes both ways. Like, obviously, if they're playing music at 11 o'clock at night really loud, then that's obvious. You know, if they're doing, playing music at nine o'clock and they, and it happens to be an older neighbor that goes to bed at nine o'clock, you know, then that's, you know, that's where it gets fuzzy, where, you know, people, you know, complain too much and it's, it's only nine o'clock at night.
So a noise ordinance would be very specific to certain hours and certain decibel levels. So you could go out there to do an enforcement and it's outside of the, or it's inside the hours where you can be loud, in which case you can't do anything. Or the noise meter reading shows that it doesn't crack the decibel level, so it's not loud per the ordinance, so therefore it can, it can take place. So if you have the officer who can simply say, please turn it down, you're causing a nuisance in the neighborhood, then that gives you a little bit more discretion to operate. And it was felt that that was at least a better interim measure and more focused on education of police officers of what they can, cannot do, what their options are, rather than going right now the fixed route of an ordinance. Okay. Anybody else?
May I ask, who were the two who have been able to take advantage of the facade grants?
Uh, 5055 Clinton Glass and then 221 East Main Street, which is the hair salon that's catty-corner to the Exxon station at Commerce, or at Grove. So they went through, it took a while. These all require SHPO approval. Those two particular properties are not in historic district. They do not lend any support to historical nature. The siding replacement on the hair salon is replacing circa 1980s siding, which arguably is not historic. The windows at Clinton Glass and updating their look. Similarly, it's, it's not a historic building. It's a basic vernacular industrial building. There's not much, there's no value there. It took a while to get them to do that. They did not, in fact, come out and look in town, but they ultimately said it was okay to proceed. So they now have a notice to proceed. They have to file their, get back to me with the signed grant agreement. It's a reimbursement grant, so they have to front the cash and then we would reimburse 75%. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Carl. Item number 10. Council Discussions. Anybody have anything they would like to discuss tonight?
The presentation of the financial statement is January 4th. You going to be here?
Am I going to be? No.
You might have it in the evening instead of the morning.
Yeah. You have to find the availability of the auditorium.
Okay. Just a thought.
Anybody else? Council Discussion?
No, this is council discussion?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, I thought.
You're already on liaison?
I thought it was litus and, yeah.
You want to move things right along, don't you?
No, 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 it's okay.
Okay. Nothing else on 10? We'll move to 11. Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. Dennis, do you have anything?
My usual, you know, the police have moved along very well, right on budget. Fortunately, also, the Communications Department seems to be very happy with their new recruit and so they're making a major impact on the overtime that they were spending. So they feel that they should come closer by the end of the year, hopefully, or just a little bit in the red. Just want to bring up two points. Just want to bring up two points that came up during the meeting. One is that the police department got involved with the Special Olympics, and as far as our town was concerned, our police department raised fourteen thousand dollars for the Special Olympics, so I thought that was kind of a feather in their cap. And the second part of that is, at this particular moment, our police department is involved in twenty community services not involved with police work, just with community services trying to help the community, various organizations, whatever, and I think that's a real tribute, and of course, I think you all read that the chief got some kind of award this week, or last week, I guess.
Last week.
And maybe you could touch on that, I'm not aware of that special connotation it is, but that's very nice, it's again, a feather in our cap, and other than that, things are fine.
Yeah, it was a local law enforcement awards dinner and ceremony that was held in Anthony's in East Haven, and the chief was up actually for the Chief of the Year in Excellence in Innovation. He did win for the Innovation Award, so he did receive that award, he did not receive Chief of the Year, but it was, it was a nice event, the FBI, local FBI, New Haven office was there, and there was another group called Peace, which promotes obviously peace. They were there as well as, as a sponsor of the event, so it was a nice event, and it was good to see that when you read, when it read everything that the chief has done here in town, and, you know, it kind of speaks volumes to all the work that he's done locally here.
And you know, I'll just add one thing to the discussion, like what Chris was talking about, when you're talking about that noise, the chief did bring that up during the meeting and said how he has been very successful, his officers say that they have been quite pleased with the public response by the fact that when they have gotten a complaint, the officer's gone up, made the people involved with it, and they've been very receptive, and so far, it's been a very good, oh, whatever, it's going along well, so, just so you even know, Chris, the police officer going to the home or business, whatever, is working.
Did you, on one of your liaison reports, you said that, that little passageway up by the little red schoolhouse was going to get closed down?
Yes.
Is that still in process?
I believe it is, I guess that's really up to.
It's pending of.
DPW and.
It's a fire department water tank project, so that project has been delayed and issues with production of the water tanks, so once that project is ready to go for construction, then that cutoff would be shut down. In the meantime, the cutoff will stay as is until such time as the public, Fire Department's project goes forward.
Question, as long as we're talking traffic kind of stuff, when does the work on the lights at the Big Y or the Indian River Complex, when does that start?
Well, remember when I told you a couple of months ago, don't shoot that messenger? I don't think, remember, I think I made a report that said that they would be done by February and that everything would be hokey pokey up there.
I thought it was starting in November.
Well, they're, right now, they're just hoping that they can get what you just said, the lighting and all the traffic lights all in place and the wiring and stuff. The actual movement of the lane and things like that probably will not be done by February. That's the latest now that we got between the state and Indian Landing people.
Asphalt plants are closed. Asphalt plants are closed.
Oh, right, November, yeah.
That kind of causes a problem for the reconfiguring traffic lanes and adjusting.
I wish they'd take a look at the intersection of Route One and High Street. I mean, the number of people, there's just a lot of confusion there with who has the opportunity to turn on a, on a green light, but that, I'm just throwing that out there, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about right now.
Anybody else on liaison reports?
Public Works Development.
I, EDC, pretty much.
He stole your thunder?
Stole my thunder.
He had that report written out and he took, all right, nothing else?
PNZ was four and a half hours long.
What was?
And there was a lot of, PNZ, a lot of big topics, part of which was the Unilever.
Planning and zoning.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, and a house on Waterside, there's a lot of stuff going on right now, a lot of plans, which is great to see, but it did take four and a half hours.
All right, anybody else? All right, I'm here none, we'll move on to a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.